Yeah, I can do that. So there we go. All right. Recording.
Years down the road. And I think that's a very real concern for many people in town. So that was some of the community import input that I got. Um, I think I just saw someone else enter the room as well. So I don't know if.
Oh, wow. I'm Francis Barrow, twenty eighth Sunset Road.
Hello. Thank you for joining us this evening. Is there anything that you wish to discuss?
Me?
Yes.
I'm just here to listen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
So those were some of the major issues that I heard. Um, again, budget, budget is a big issue. Obviously, it's a big issue for everyone right now. You know, there's a lot going on in the town, in the state, in the country, in society, and um, you know, I, I just think that, that people are queuing in on this issue and they want to make sure that we're doing all that we can to fight for the school and to get what we believe is necessary for the school. Um, I, I hear the town and I hear their concerns. But I, I, I feel strongly and others do as well that that shouldn't prevent us from pushing forward with the budget that we feel is the best for the school and the students in the school. Um, it's not about the parents, it's not about the teachers, it's about the students in the act. So that was a lot of what I've heard.
I can second everything that Greg just said. I've been hearing a lot of the same that he just mentioned as well.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, I know. It's, it's very challenging right now. But I, I do agree that it's all about the kids, supporting the kids in the community. And we'll talk more as we go um through the third iteration of the budget in more detail. And we certainly will be discussing with FinCom when we meet with them as well. So if there is no further correspondence or community input, we can move forward to, I don't think we have any bills to review this evening.
Oh, we do actually. Actually, it's right there.
Sorry, missed the step amongst all this paper. Okay.
So the bill is a short list, but a large amount generated mostly by town of Swampskid tuition bill. It's being paid. So the amount being considered for total is six hundred and thirty-five thousand nine sixty-six eighty-three. Uh, everything is a standard item. Uh, the ones that you might have a question about N R G business marketing. I called my lifeline Chris Katzos and said, what is that? That is the gas supplier for the heating for the school. And then uh Worthington Direct is an Esser expense charged out to Esser and is for um lecterns that were purchased so teachers can stand in front of their group and move that around and not be tied to their desk. And it was purchased with the federal Esser funds that were left over. And the final one is uh C E L integrity learning solutions, and that's our technology service fee for outside services for computers and that sort of thing. It's an annual amount. Everything else is uh supplies and Amonti or the minor repairs, national grid and those sorts of things. So that's acceptable. We could uh consider six thirty-five nine sixty-six eighty-three.
But I have a motion.
Motion to approve the expenditure of six hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-three cents.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right, since we met just before vacation and we had vacation, not a tremendous amount of change, but uh we have received our anonymous eighty thousand dollars wired to our account for the greenhouse.
Congrats.
We've lined up someone who'll do a foundation for a reasonable amount. And now we're just looking for someone to be the installer of the actual structure. And right now, and I'm hoping this will play out, is that Essex Tech through their programs, carpentry and electricity and all that could put the kit together and there'd be basically no charge. The kids would come over and learn following plans and blueprints and that sort of stuff. So I have the request in and I'm just hoping that could fit in. If it does, um, we'll either try to put the structure up in um late May for the first part of September, so it's ready to go next year. For kids to learn about sustainability and marketing and uh something really positive in the world, you know, a greenhouse can be a wonderful thing. So we're making progress in that direction. Um, principal's report, Kevin, I gave him the night off to rest up. He's had a recent health challenge and uh there's nothing on this agenda that directly related to him being here. So I think rest was important for him. Uh, the things on his report, uh, the first grade long-term substitute for Maddie Fadaro, who uh hopefully in a week or so will welcome a new child into the world. And uh we've hired Melissa Austin, who has teaching experience. She has already started in an overlap situation uh as of Monday. So Maddie's technical due date is March seventh. We go earlier, could go later, but the teacher who will be the teacher of record will have a chance to know the kids and uh get used to the building and sort of tag team the instruction so that when Maddie goes out, it's not a sort of instantaneous sort of change with regard to that. She'll be paid a sub rate until Maddie leaves and then she'd be paid at the base master's degree rate, even though she has a higher degree. For long-term sub, you go to the base of the scale. Uh, Kevin has made some progress in the after-school program with Champions. Again, uh, there's an agreement in hand. It would run from two fifteen to five fifteen. Be flexible schedule with respect to which days students attend. One to two weeks, one to two days a week would be for a hundred and five dollars. Three to five days a week would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars. A ten percent discount if sending multiple children. You can do a drop-in, which I guess is just pick or choose one day at a time for ninety-one dollars. And it would also be open on days that the school was fully closed, closed for a hundred and fifteen dollars a day. So those that were still working and needed that connection for their kids could pay that hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, custodian would be here, the school could be opened and uh there could be that um service provided during that same timeframe. It would focus on interest areas of students. They're gonna begin looking to enroll students in March with the program starting in the fall. And the last little connection that we had today, because we were unsure if they sort of understood the financing imbalance that sort of hurt the last program where the enrollment wasn't enough to pay the staff. Uh, we have pinned them down that the minimum number that they can run a program for is fifty. So I think that's a reasonable number and we'd be able to generate, especially if those rates are not really high, to have the fifteen. But if it fell down to ten or five, they just wouldn't be able to run the program. So they're gonna write that fifteen minimum into their agreement, or we won't have a provider. So that's the update on that. Uh, curriculum wise, again, we're continuing to look at uh math programs. Today, we had a presentation for the staff after school on H M H Into Math uh program, and that is used by uh Swampskid Middle School right now. And that's one of the things we wanted to do is to, if there was a successfully programmed uh that was highly rated already in place in Swampskid, that we want to make sure we took a good look at that and you know, simply because our kids go there and we want to make sure they have the best shot they possibly can have. So that is Kevin's report.
Can I ask one question regards to the potential after-school program? So just to clarify, for the days that school is not in session, would they be onsite for the entire day or just from two fifteen to five fifteen?
That I don't believe. Uh, it's a higher rate. So I can only make an assumption that the higher rate means they're here for a longer period of time. But that's supposition, because I didn't get that clarified today when Kevin gave me his uh, his notes. It simply says on Kevin sheet, open when full school is closed.
That would be a big benefit too.
Ideally, that would mean that someone who worked in Boston or whatever would have the program available from the beginning to the end of the day, even though kids uh weren't here for regular school and they would provide um program for those kids on that day. And I think it's probably close to that because you can go three or five days a week for a hundred and seventy-five total dollars. On the day schools closed, it's a hundred and fifteen dollars. So if you apply that to three to five days, at that rate, it would be five or six hundred dollars. So I, I, I think you have to assume that means the coverage is for the entire day and they must have encountered that program in other cities and states where they've done that. And when school's out, families have a really difficult time and that's the way of adjusting to that. Otherwise, it'd be no justification to go to a hundred and fifteen dollars a day. Or that has to be the answer to your question. Without total confirmation, that has to be the answer.
So a couple of questions. Uh, so I answered, you know, the surveys that went out. Um, is there any more updated information about the potential program? So Champions, what is the company?
That is, that is the name of the company, isn't it? Champions, and that would be based here, correct?
Yes, yes. There'd be no, uh, like a little short period of time trying to go to the Y and things like that. This would be great in this building.
Right.
Same kind of program the Y was running before it imploded and uh.
And the age, the youngest is five, right? Which I think is what it was noted, is it five?
I believe they will not do preschool age children, but they will do kindergarten.
Right. And then do you happen to know how it was gonna be broken down? I see interest areas, like, you know, it'd be broken up or the structure, I think. I wasn't exactly fully aware of whether Y M C was, was doing it or the ratios of students to supervisors.
No, these are all really good questions and when Kevin.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was an update.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, let's shut that all out, but these are great questions. My only other question is, will this information be available to parents like, well, in advance, we're already at the end of February? Yeah, I was gonna say, because ideally, like early March, because so many are really planning for next year.
Because Kevin was in charge of overseeing the preschool, that he gets that material out. I mean, I, I think it's just solidifying that they'll even do the program for us. And we wanted to clarify, all right, what's the minimum?
Right.
Because we ended a program and there was one or two kids being taken for that Y. And are you gonna run the program for two kids, you know?
Right.
They said, well, we think it's around fifteen, but we need a figure in the contract.
Right.
And so we're waiting for them to respond to the, we need our figure in the contract. And the estimate is fifteen. As soon as we get surety that the programs will exist, then we'll get things out.
Would that impact the rates? We have more students? Everybody making a difference? Out of curiosity.
Interesting question.
If there happened to be more with this rate.
I think the problem with that is the more you have, the more supervisors you need, because there's always that ratio that you need to follow. So I, you know, I think at some point it becomes a losing proposition where you know, you need a supervisor for six kids, say, so you've either got twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, you need to pay more people. So I, that's just my own gut reaction, but.
Yeah. No, it makes complete sense. I just guess. Thank you.
But yeah, I agree. We should definitely try and get those surveys out sooner than later to make sure we have the fifteen.
Yep.
Yeah. Any parents in plan? So are there any personnel updates since?
Uh, just the one I gave at the beginning, uh, with Melissa Austin coming in as long in terms of no additional ones beyond that.
And at this point, I, I know we discussed at our last meeting, but is there any old business or new business that we care?
Well, like this, the budget's old business. We've got it as an agenda item, so we can come back to that.
Moving on to the district report card.
And that would have been a Kevin presentation, so um we'll put that on the next agenda.
And in terms of the Johnson School Calendar, do we want to talk about this today or are we?
Yeah, right now it's in the same format that we had before. I did receive a, a draft of Swampskits. But there was no easy lineup of days. We thought, well, maybe it could be a big presentation in the fall for a full-day workshop at Swampskid that uh we maybe could share the cost of for a presenter. Uh, Swampskid only has two full-day professional days in their calendar. Everything else are half-day releases. And it would be difficult to really take part meaningfully in their half-day releases because of the timeframe of them. And um they're not even sure exactly what will be offered on those days yet. Let alone have voted their calendar. So I, I don't think there's any way that we can guarantee that we can line up our days with Swampskid's calendar. So my recommendation is we adopt the calendar as we had it presented a couple of meetings ago. Uh, start date is, it's basically a mirror image of this year. Start date would be August twenty-fifth with teachers, kids accept kindergarten and preschool on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, fourth. Um, kindergarten and preschool on the twenty-seventh. That Friday, uh, just before Labor Day weekend off, it's a long weekend. That's been sort of a tradition. Uh, open house would be on uh Thursday, the fourth of September. Uh, there'd be a half-day workshop days for the first kind of uh work, most likely on the new math program. That's the H on the uh eighth of September. Uh, there'd be a full-day workshop on the tenth of October. And for parents and kids, that would make a four-day Columbus Day weekend. So teachers would be in on that Friday, but parents would have a, a longer than normal uh extended weekend. The conference days are a little earlier. There was a concern that they were coming late in the year. They were starting in December. So those are set for the uh sixth and seventh of November. Uh, there's another full-day workshop, the sort of third one of the year, uh, just before Veterans Day. So the teachers would come to school on Monday. Tuesday, the eleventh, Veterans Day would be off for parents. That would be then a uh four or five-day weekend right there with regard to that. But teachers would do uh professional development on that uh Monday in November. Uh, Christmas break is laid out there, February break. Uh, April break, same sort of setup and how they fall. The estimated last day of school would be June twelfth without any snow days at all. And if there were five snow days, then it will take us all the way to the twenty-second. Because Juneteenth is a national holiday and therefore if you add in five days, you had the five snow days, which you must do a hundred and eighty school days, would take us all the way to the twenty-second of June. So for reference, we've had one snow day this year and that was it. Uh, that doesn't mean we haven't had winters when we've had five or six. But you would be able to have four snow days before you ran into having to go to that last full week in June. So my recommendation would be that we uh adopt that calendar and uh you can always make changes to it later if you needed to. Does have to be submitted to the state voted up. I, I just don't think we're gonna get any automatic coordination with Swampskid this year. And since we're more than likely putting a major math program change, that's gonna be our professional development focus for the year.
So just to clarify, Rob, Swampskid has two full days of professional development.
They have those, well, they have two full uh non-student days and they are up fronted right at the very beginning of the year. So one of those, they start on Monday as well. But Tuesday, they don't have kids. One of those days is a introductory day where superintendent speak and uh teachers set up their rooms and do all that sort of stuff. Isn't necessarily driven on my curricular professional development. And I, we don't know what they're doing in that day either. So to have that mirrored in our calendar doesn't make a lot of sense and the rest of their days are all scattered through it in half-day releases. And they're more per grade, they're not, or per school. But sometimes it'll be the elementary school as a half-day release, but the rest of Swampskid District is in school. And then the next early release is middle school. So uh since we're sort of a combination in, in, in terms of those grades, I think if there was something really important that we could get coverage for teachers that needed to go at the grade specific for that professional development and free them up so they'd have a professional day, we'd have a sub for them. As long as it was a, a very worthwhile professional development. But once we find out what that is, then we'll be able to make a better decision on that.
That's great. So that's an option. Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Johnson Elementary School Calendar?
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Johnson Elementary School Calendar presented on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second? I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. And moving on to the presentation of version number three.
Okay, I'm gonna actually put that on the screen. I'm gonna rotate the room for those that are in the audience so that you can see it. And uh we'll go through that and uh we'll can have discussion. So let me try to do that without tripping over a bunch of chords. That work for everybody in the audience? Mariana, I can see you. Is that, so you can see?
Yeah, it's, it's cutting off the top a little bit. There you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'll talk us through it. All right, so this is the point we're at with the budget. Uh, it's called version three. It's set up again in the, the same presentation that Tony Parentazzi would have. Uh, it might help us if we took the light off, I think, in terms of seeing the part. That good? That good for those in the audience, Mariana?
Yes, thank you.
So remember we had version one. Version one had a budget increase of two hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. It was plus five point one nine percent. Then we had a version two that was a budget increase of three hundred and sixteen thousand, three fifty-eight, a six point six seven percent increase. And that one included the addition of the math and E L L specialist, which is a brand-new position. And I think then you were kind of referring to that, I believe, earlier. So it's, it's a non-special ed position. It's a general ed position that is used for kids that don't qualify for special education but uh struggle still with math and English language arts. And if they get behind, especially in math, that's a real challenge to keep up and not get discouraged and all the kind of things that go along with that. So a specialist goes into classrooms, pulls kids out of classrooms and works with them to keep them up and engaged with the work in the various areas of the school for kids that do not qualify for special education.
Right.
So it's an intervention-type program.
Right.
And most big school districts will have a math specialist and an E L L specialist and a reading specialist. Small school like ours um generally doesn't have that. But it was something that we had on our wish list. We hoped to be able to add it. But it was generating a sizable increase because most of that increase, as we'll see, is generated by increase in special education, uh, tuitions and transportation. And with the combination, that amount of increase, I, I think the town, when Tony was here, said the entire amount that's in the differential available for new dollars this year is less than three hundred thousand for everybody, all departments. So if the school were to receive the three sixteen, that caused a issue for the entire budget in the town, wouldn't be able to increase at all. So that was version two. And then version three, as it stands right now, and what you'll see tonight, uh, is an increase of a hundred and twelve thousand, so two point three six percent increase. And it flows as follows. Uh, the Johnson School shows a negative seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars. The district portion of the budget is plus one ninety-one, one fifty-nine. And the town section of the budget is minus four thousand dollars. The factors that are affecting this budget, there's a significant cost increase for special education, tuition and transportation, and it's due to additional placements and change in placements. There's an increase of kids that need outside placements from nine kids to twelve kids. And those programs are expensive for both the tuition and the transportation for the program that those kids rightfully deserve and need for their um disability status. Uh, salary increases, the collective bargaining agreement in place for the teachers shows a three point two five percent change. Later on tonight, you'll consider the one for the parents, that's your other union contract. There was one less teacher, grade five, the teacher position was not filled. When we had a teacher very early in the school year leave, uh, we shifted teachers around and combined things and worked that through so that the total teaching staff is minus one teacher. We did, however, to adjust for that, add an additional uh para-position, E S P for special education for the students here. The school counselor who had been funded through grant money, a large portion of her salary, she was still a full-time employee at one point oh, but not all funded through the budget. The Esser grants and the federal money supporting a portion of her salary is now gone, that's dried up. So in order to keep a full-time counselor here at the school, you really need to absorb that into your budget. So she remains full-time, just as she was, but the cost shifts into the school budget. And I'll just go on record as saying, um, the work I've seen that uh lady do in this school was invaluable and that you, you couldn't do it with a partial counsel. The issues would occur when that person wasn't there by Murphy's Law or whatever it would be. And then it's, it's super important for the kids, for the continuity of education, to have that full-time position, but that costs the budget some money. Uh, Swampskid tuition is a contract and that's set at an increase of two and a half percent, which I think is more than reasonable, and it's regardless of the number of students that you send. So if we sent more kids, it's, it, it's a set figure. We happen to send less kids, it's a set figure, but two and a half is a reasonable increase. We did find out that the tech center. Um, prediction for next year's budget is less than what we originally had on our first reversion. That's because there are fourteen kids at the tech center. As of last year, which generates what this year's amount is. And eleven kids this year, which is used to generate the tuition for next year. So that decrease of students. And then their budget is only up about three and something percent. Means our share, because I believe there's seventeen towns or whatever that go to Essex Tech. Uh, means that our share of the pie is less because we have less students. So that was a decrease of about thirty thousand dollars. So that's that. Significant impacts to the budget again, increased costs for the additional E S P. And the total cost of the errors is plus forty thousand. Swampscut's tuition increase, including the charge for sixth grade, is plus forty-two thousand. And then the large number out of district tuitions and transportations. The budget carries a hundred and seventy thousand in an increase. The actual increase is three hundred and twenty thousand. Because what we're doing is taking, let's say, no, total budget impact is reduced. By a by applying state aid circuit breaker funding revenue. To offset the F Y twenty-six budget impact by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is new as of the last time we met. Also taking a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one of the preschool tuition balance revenue. That comes from fees and applying that to the lines in the budget that. The preschool also utilizes. And that is what drops that budget down. From the five percent down to the two point three six percent. So what's happening is the preschool fees will be paying about twenty percent of the school nurse. Twenty percent of the adjustment counselor, twenty percent of custodial services. Twenty percent of heating costs, twenty percent of the electrical costs and telephone costs. And the town share of one family plane insurance policy. Add that all up, that's a hundred and eight thousand. It doesn't change the nature of the present preschooler. What it does is take a initial balance that was around two hundred thousand. And spends a portion of that to reduce the budget impact. Now that is not a ongoing solution. Because if you did that every year, the fees would not keep up. With the expenses that are charged, including this offset. So this is, in my mind, a one-year, maybe two-year. Um, change, I'm not gonna say a solution, it's a change that could happen from the balance in the preschool fees. And it's simply taking the amount that a parent is charged. And applying some of that to the services used. So the nurse takes care of preschool kids and the council takes care of preschool kids, the custodians clean, et cetera. So we traditionally haven't done that. The fees have gone into an account, and that's where it stayed. And during ESER, it grew, and it grew to a fairly large number. And um, to carry two, three hundred thousand dollars on the balance. Is probably um, a hard thing to explain. The parents who are paying fees and the account carries a huge balance. Even Stafford, which couldn't understand why that works. Well, because we, when we had federal money, a lot of things were charged to the federal money and not to those fee accounts. But this approach now is going to take that two hundred thousand. And reduce that balance into the hundred thousand dollar range. And therefore you can't do that in a subsequent year with the same number of kids. Without a huge increase or a least a substantial increase in what you charge for preschool tuition. So this will help alleviate uh, the town overall. Budget profile issue for this year, but can't become something that is sustainable over time.
Can I just say something at this point? Please.
Greg, please.
Um, you know, I I have a real issue with the fact that we are now using. For one, the the preschool, for it to shoulder twenty percent of the cost seems out of line. Um, they're there for only a portion of the day. Two, we're now using fees that are paid by very select members of the town. To cover what I view as town-wide expenses. I mean, I get it, we've got the money there, we'll do it for one year. But we're now subsidizing the town's tax revenue with fees that are paid by people. Who pay that preschool like it's essentially a private school. I mean, my daughter was in there for two years, it's eight hundred dollars. A we, a month or whatever, depending on how often you go and this and that. So that's something that I paid above and beyond my taxes. So to then take that money to use it to cover expenses that in my mind are. Expenses that should be covered by town taxes, I I just have a real issue with. We're robbing from Peter to pay Paul, and this is a town issue. This is not a preschool issue. Um, I get it, there was two hundred grand in there, and maybe that's a lot, but. I I just have a real problem that, you know, to say that that preschool program uses twenty percent of these services. I I I I just can't justify that in my mind. So I just wanna get that out there, that, you know. Again, I I I I just don't think it's appropriate to be using monies paid essentially for a private service. To cover tax expenses.
And Greg, the only uh, and it's not a comeback, it's the only uh. Comment related to that is. The preschool fees include the extension of the academic portion of the day for something they call lunch punch. Not all kids do that.
That's an additional fee, Rob.
Right, but that still generates that total balance. That that's.
And which again, it's people that are doing it, you know, they don't, we don't have to do it, like, you know, everyone could say, okay, fine, I'll pull my kid out of the preschool. You'll still get the tax revenue, but in my mind, we're just using something that. This isn't revenue generated by taxes, this is revenue generated by people paying a fee to have their kid go there. And I get it, they use some of the services, but I have to believe if you do an analysis, it's not twenty percent. Um, and I just get nervous that now. You know, we're coming in with this hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase by sucking money out of programs that were privately funded, essentially. Um, so, that's, that's just, I I have to say that.
Yep, and I respect you for that, um. There are years, and this would have been a year, if this hadn't been the proposed solution to next year's budget. Our budget this year, because of the special ed expenses that were incurring this year. Would have been over um, two hundred and some thousand dollars that we would have applied a little bit of circuit breaker to. And then we would have had to backfill into this year's budget from. Either lines that had balances in it or from accounts such as preschool. To be able to uh, just take care of the overage for this year. And part of the promise from the town, that Patty and I went to a meeting. Is that our overage this year, which I figured at bottom line of a hundred and forty-one thousand. That the town will approach the finance committee to go to their reserve and for town. Account balance transfers to cover our overage in the F Y twenty-five budget. And that this one oh eight is to decrease the. Overall impact of next year's town budget, so it fits within what they have for available revenue. Would that be the best way to describe that, Patty?
It's well.
So um, i- i- if this hadn't been the plan for next year, which it wasn't originally. We would have had to have uh, shifted funds from that. Two hundred thousand dollar preschool balance into lines because the sped account was over. Or the only other option we would have had would have been to, again, like they suggest this year, go to the FinCon reserve. And um, that is not a huge reserve, my understanding is that particular reserve. Is enough to take care of this year's overage. So it's, it's not an easy budget situation that we're in at all.
No, but I feel like we're the ones that are that are sacrificing by using funds that were paid for the preschool. To try and write the town's budget, the the special education increases, the increase in out-of-district tuitions and transportation, those are town issues. That's the whole town's responsibility to resolve. That's not something that the Johnson School created, or the district, or, you know, that that's a town issue. That the townspeople need to resolve, it's not up to the twenty parents who send their kids to the preschool to resolve that, in my mind. Um, and that's what I feel like we're doing, it's putting a Band-Aid on a. On an open wound, like, it's just, I, and I hear you, Rob, you know, we're doing what we can, but. I I just hope that the town is doing that as well in other areas. Um, you know, I mean, I don't see the town budget, I've never seen the town budget, I have no idea what they're doing in other areas. You know, I feel like I'm working in a black box here. Um, but it just seems to me like we're taking funds that were. Supposed to be for something else that the people who paid that money thought it was going to something else. To now write a town issue that. I I think the town needs to have more responsibility for.
And this is not the final um. Working of this budget, it 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 goes to FinCon. And we have to make a presentation to FinCon, with my understanding.
Yes, and it's a long discussion.
They're the ones that will shepherd that budget forward to town meeting or not, or make adjustments to that. So I think we have a venue coming up in March where. The powers that be that control all that, the finance committee. Will have a uh, opportunity to hear those same concerns, Greg, that you just shared.
So, Rob, let me ask, are we allowed to just reach into that preschool account and use it? I mean, I I get it, we're using it for things that relate to the preschool, you know, and that. That obviously, I mean, yeah, the preschool certainly uses heat and electrical and all of that stuff. Um, what percentage of it compared to the rest of the school, I have no idea.
I I mean, I wonder where that percentage came from, it was uh. Actually twenty-two point something percent, I believe. And I looked at that and I said, well, it it really can't be. How many grades are in the school divided by that, because that would be uh, seven slots. And you divide that into a hundred, you don't come up with twenty-two percent. Uh, there are forty-two kids enrolled in preschool, and I I think what they did is they looked at it alone.
But Rob, they leave at eleven-thirty in the morning.
I agree with that, Greg.
And the ones who don't pay for lunch bunch, it's an it's an additional cost. I know that I'm not gonna convince anyone, I'm just expressing my opinion that, you know, I I really think that we need to push the town. On the budget issue, um, you know, Rob, I think you've tried to work magic here. Again, I don't know what other departments are doing, I have no idea, it's a black box.
I hear what you're saying, I I agree with what you're saying.
In terms, in terms of what other departments are doing. I will say that Allison, who's the director of finance, and Tony, they were fairly transparent. Um, with sharing some of the other departments in the town and the challenges that they're. The other departments are facing as well, I really don't envy either one of them in trying to balance the budget for the town. Because everybody um. Has needs, and we wanna make sure that. We don't take up the entire budget, but that we also provide the services to the kids.
Yeah, I mean, we all have lived through the past three years, you know, when inflation is more than your increase in tax revenue, you're gonna end up with shortfalls. It's just simple math. But.
And I did bring up a tax override because it's an. I mean, we cannot keep funding the school at the percentage that we are funding, and so when that. When that does happen, if it doesn't happen this year, because they're looking at it um. Holistically as a town, what that dollar amount means to be.
You know, and Patty, the other thing is, is when I started this back in April, all I heard was, we always give money back to the town, we always give money back to the town. I mean, I heard two hundred thousand dollars one year went back to the town. And now we need it, and it's gone. Like, that, we should have put that money in a rainy day account, if we had known that when we needed it, it wasn't gonna be there. I mean, you know, and we can't cry over spilled milk, what's done is done, but. I just, I I anticipated when I heard that, that that was like, yeah, so that when we need it, it's there and we can access it. And now I'm hearing we need it, and it's not there to access, it's gone somewhere else. You know, which I have an issue with.
No, I understand, this is really, really challenging. And there's, and this isn't the end of this, I mean, this will be a a very lengthy conversation with the FinCon.
Do you know what day that meeting is?
Hasn't been set yet, Greg.
It's gonna be.
Okay.
The early March, is my understanding, early to mid-March, but the date hasn't been said. And you're more than welcome to join us, by the way, Brad.
No, I think that would be very important.
I was gonna say, I would love to, unfortunately, I'm gonna be out of town from March sixth through March fifteenth.
Yeah, I just don't have a date yet, I'll I'll get it out to folks as as soon as I'm provided with it.
But I would be more than happy to join you, Patty, and voice my concerns on my own behalf or the school committee, whoever. Um, but I I just feel like. These things need to be said in in a bigger forum than what we have here, you know, I I wish that we could have more townspeople join us. Um, because they're all concerned about it, but, you know, it it, I I just don't know if it's landing on deaf ears.
I hope that's not the case, I know there is a lot of concern.
You know, it's not like we painted a bathroom in gold, it's.
No.
Special education costs that are everybody's responsibility that have caused this to happen.
And inside of our control.
Completely. But I I will say no more, Rob, I will let you continue.
I will do so.
Thank you, Greg, though.
Um, Johnson Elementary School budget changes, um, regular full-time employee salary increases. Updated for current budgeted staff collective bargaining agreements, and we mentioned three point two five percent. Uh, Unit B will talk about later on, executive session, take a vote. Again, we mentioned we reduced one uh, fifth-grade teacher, add the E S P, school counselor. Next year, there'll be two sections of second grade, one section of kindergarten, first grade, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. Net teacher change, minus one teacher, and then again, the note, applying a hundred and eight thousand, preschool tuition. Reduces the Johnson Elementary School portion of the budget to a decrease. From last year's amount of minus seventy-four thousand, eight sixty. Those are the accounts that get um. Proportioned for that preschool amount, school health service salaries, eighteen thousand, nine forty. School guidance salaries, fifteen thousand, four thirty-three. Custodial salary, twenty-four, eight oh one, heating, gas, ninety-nine hundred. Uh, electrical services, eighty-eight hundred, telephone services, two thousand ninety. The subtotal of that is seventy-nine, nine sixty-five. And then the one health insurance plan charged off to preschool. Uh, twenty-eight thousand, seven fifty-six, and there's that total of a hundred and eight thousand, seven twenty-one. The balance in the preschool account, just for that uh, recording there, was uh, as of eleven-thirty, twenty-four. Two hundred and two thousand, two fifteen, so that's where I was alluding to. When this exercise is done and all the fees are collected and that amount is applied to next year's budget. The preschool balance will be down in the hundred thousand dollar range. And that would be difficult to sustain that approach. In my mind, any further than what it would be for what's on the table right now. District budget changes, tuition for the high school, uh, we mentioned that, forty-two thousand. District budget changes. Tuition for the high school, uh, we mentioned that, forty-two thousand. Superintendent's office increases four thousand one fourteen. School Committee nineteen thousand ninety-six. The out-of-district tuition and our spent collaborative, the total for the tuition part is an increase of one forty-two. And again, we're applying seventy-five of the one fifty in circuit breaker to that amount to get the two seventeen that it actually is down to one forty-two. That makes the total budget uh for the district change of the one ninety-one, one fifty-nine. Town changes, out-of-district transportation is uh plus twenty-seven thousand two fifty-three. In reality, it's a hundred and two thousand increase. But again, the other part of the one fifty in circuit breaker that is applied reduces that down to twenty-seven two fifty-three. Lower cost for the tech center, as I mentioned, minus thirty-one takes the town portion of the school budget down by four thousand dollars. And then these are just the comparisons. Johnson School, again, we just went through these figures. Uh, bottom line on the budget, hundred and twelve thousand increase at the bottom of the screen, two point uh three six percent. And this shows year by year, uh, twenty-three change in FY twenty-three was a hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase, two point six percent. The change to FY twenty-four was a hundred and ninety-four, four point five percent. The change in this budget we're in right now, FY twenty-five, was of additional a hundred and ninety thousand increase of four point two percent. And then as we just went through, a hundred and twelve thousand is where we're at right now, at a two point three six percent increase. So that's the budget presentation and um really all I can say on that right now, I guess.
But are there any comments, any additional comments or questions that people may have?
May I?
Yes, of course, if you could.
How many, how many years did the town give, did the school give that money? The past, I'll say, five years for the town. And do you have a, you have a call?
I believe it was at least three or four in a row. And there were a couple of years where it was a fairly large amount.
Right.
And it wasn't necessarily because of our lines being bloated going into the budget build. We were in a time when COVID was going on and they were supplying ESER funds to schools. And instead of spending budget money, it was being applied to ESER lines and therefore there was leftover money in budget lines that because we don't have an established reserve was turned back over to the town.
Right.
And and we're not in that situation anymore.
I I
So so that's the the real issue with regard to uh why I think those lines had extra funds in them. Wasn't because the previous superintendent misbudgeted, put in skyrocketing amounts. I mean, he was about as conservative as you could get and honest with his budget, including applying things where he could to that grant money because a lot of places left grant money on the table. And 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 didn't spend all their ESER funds.
I tend to agree with Greg on this. It it is a town issue. I mean, you have special education and I I I can, I understand the transportation cost and the tuitions, it costs money, but when you take money away from the school itself, I mean, it looks like you have a shortfall, even if you if you don't fund the uh teachers that you want to hire.
Oh, yeah, I mean, if we didn't uh yeah, we'd be in a a tough situation right now without that.
So now, what I would do now, and honestly, because I was in the board of selection, the term, I can tell you that I don't think it's right that the school committee has to present their budget the way they do before the town shows their their cards. And they're not showing their cards. And they never do, okay? So again, I I and I'm just, this is just coming from me. I would be very careful of that. Uh, look at the stabilization fund. I mean, are they gonna, are they gonna fund that this year? Uh, these are things that you should really look at because we don't need to keep putting money to the stabilization fund. We don't need to keep putting money in other other things. If you need the money, I mean, I think it's going to defray some of the state laws myself. I mean, I think if a kid needs extra help in math, uh uh, Meredith was a pure math teacher, right? Okay, so you know, I mean, a kid struggled with that stuff and you, they need it. And and it, but to me, if deep fund the school or to battle is not always the the right way to go. It's not like you put it in your pocket and give it to little kids, you know, so that's that's just my piece. So I would look at all those things. I would look at their budget and see what they have to say because honestly, you guys have shown your cards, right? Here's your budget. They haven't done theirs. And I don't know if they're listening to me, but maybe they are.
Well, thank you. I I appreciate it.
So and remember, it's FinCon's budget. This is not, town meeting is FinCon's budget. It's not the selectmen's budget. Okay, you better present to them as, you know, I would look at stabilization. I would look at all those things. See if they're funding that. They shouldn't be funding it. If you have a shortfall, they shouldn't be funding that. It's my opinion.
Appreciate it. So Rob, next steps. Next steps in this is to vote on it and send it over, correct?
I think in reality, it's already been passed to the selectmen in the FinCon.
For review.
That version and and waiting for the the venue in front of the FinCon to be argued about what it really is. So I I'm not so sure that, I mean, we're we're I I think technically you need to vote a budget because it becomes your budget.
It becomes a school.
Right now, it's a superintendent's budget that's been presented, a version one, a version two, which really wanted to have, and then a version three. That we just presented without being editorialized for me on that as superintendent. And it it does need to become a school committee budget to be officially passed on. So I think you could choose to do that in a vote with a uh serious amount of concern uh and wanting to discuss the issues that are inherent in that vote with the Finance Committee, who then puts that next budget forward. I don't think they're gonna say, well, you voted it. I I think you can express concern in your motion about the amount. But I think you have to have a school committee budget to move forward. And
Can I ask, if we're gonna use a hundred and something thousand from the preschool fund and the this teacher that we wanted to add was seventy thousand, by my math, that still says that we're taking an additional thirty thousand off of our original version one. If we go for version two while using some of the preschool funds, I know we're not supposed to use those funds to pay for salaries, but we're not. We're using it to pay for overages. I mean, can we do that and say, okay, we're giving you a hybrid here of?
We do charge off, the preschool teachers are charged to the preschool fund. The the pairs that are in that program are charged to the preschool fund. Uh, supplies for the preschool, I'm not sure how big an amount that is, is charged to the preschool fund. So there already are amounts that uh are in that preschool revolving account that are already charged off there. So the two teachers who are at point six three FTE, so a little more than halftime, aren't in your regular school budget. They're funded through the fees that are collected.
I guess what I'm saying, Rob, is like, one of our budgets, I'm trying to go back, one of the first proposed budget had an increase of what, like two hundred and forty thousand or something? Sorry. I'm just going back. I'm going off of my uh
Yeah, the two forty-six was that original budget before uh we had um
Yep.
Been presented with the town challenges and that sort of thing. And uh when we were presenting, we said, well, we'd also like to do a version two because we'd like seventy thousand and change to go towards a potential additional position. So that's what took the two forties something up to the three hundred thousand mark. And then the number that goes down to one twelve is with the one oh eight, but also that just as of last Friday is when they got the Essex Tech tuition being down by thirty thousand. Where in the first two versions, I was carrying an increase in the Essex Tech budget. And this budget actually shows a decrease in the amount we'd be paying for Essex Tech. So I I think that's the variable you're picking up on, Greg, is that all those other na- numbers that we had looked at before and all the other budget lines have remained unchanged. And even the predicted special education amounts for next year, we had those pretty well solidified. The wild card in there was the reduction in the um Essex Tech tuition. And it it may even be a little less than that. I think it was uh two hundred and ten thousand, but this budget's carrying two twenty or whatever because they're, they haven't finalized the Essex Tech budget. They were called by the Finance Director with the you can expect this.
In terms of every
So they put a little safety valve in it, not a huge safety valve. But I think that's creating the the variable that you're picking up on, Greg. The the rest of the math would have been original budget of two forty-something plus the potential for the specialist in the seventies. And that was a guess as to, you know, master's degree person halfway up the scale. Uh, could have been more than that, could have been less than that, depending on who was hired. And um then the version three is the minus one oh eight. And then the Essex Tech um dividend that came through just as of last Friday as a anticipated amount. But otherwise
So I guess what I'm trying to say, Rob, is if we take version two and we take the one oh eight off and we take the Essex Tech decrease off of the three sixteen, three fifty-eight increase, then what do we end up at?
So you're basically suggesting a version four that's a hybrid of version three and version two.
Essentially, yeah, like, okay, give us the the math specialist and ELA person and we'll use some of the preschool funds to clear up some of the other issues that we have going on. And present that as the budget. It's still not as high as version one. It's certainly not as high as version two. But I mean, it's not the gift that version three is to the town. You know, we get what we want, which is the math person. They get what they want by us applying some of this tuition revenue and fight again next year. I don't know. But it's some sort of a compromise, I think. You know, I'm trying to come up with a compromise here of everybody wants something.
No, I, yeah.
And I think where we present that, Greg, is that this uh FinCon meeting, I think that's the meeting of sort of where everything comes together.
You know, but I think we'll have to put together a version four, I hate to say.
Cause personally, I cannot get behind version three. Version three, we're giving away the farm. So that's just me. Um, so I'm trying to find a way to compromise and say, give us what we want. We'll try and work with you on what you want and you know, the best compromises are when everybody walks away a little bit unhappy.
Because I'm wondering, now that we know it's not sustainable, having done the analysis of preschool tuition of assigning an allocation of twenty-two percent every year. Even if we had to go higher this year as an allocation for something to those funds, knowing it's a one-time thing that we do to balance the budget.
See, but Tony's gonna go off the wall because he said you can't hire someone based on a one-time revenue. Because that's a recurring cost that you're gonna have year after year. Once this one-time payment from the preschool is gone, we gotta find a way to fund it next year. So are we kicking the can down the road? Maybe a little bit, but it kind of sounds like the whole town might be. So everyone can play that game.
Yeah. Look, it's gonna get to the point where the town is gonna have to look at a tax override. There's just nowhere.
But that's why I don't want to give up on this, Patty, because if they do the tax override, I want that person, that specialist in that tax override. I don't want them to do the tax override and then have us go back and say, all right, now give us our specialist. Oh, no, we didn't include that. Like, well
Oh, I I know, and they're not ready to do it this year. They want to do one comprehensive one in the future that addresses the needs of all departments in the town.
So that's why, like, let's get what we want this year so that when they do that override, it's in place and they know exactly what they need. Like, if we don't do it this year, then next year, I I just have a the concern that we're gonna be in the same exact spot next year and they're gonna say, well, that would mean a seven and a half percent override. And God, we can't do that, like. So I I feel very strongly that we should push for what we want now and not wait for next year.
And where it is need in this town, it's a very affluent town.
I
So people need to pony up.
I do.
And this is our, the the future of this town, people who've come back to this town, a lot of uh, parents now who have their kids here, grew up in this town, they left, they came back, they're here, like we should do what's right for the kids, right? Because the the preschoolers and kindergartners, they start, they start learning math, like, you, once you get behind, it can be really challenging to get back. And as you know, as educators and working in the school system, um, I do think it's really important that more parents are involved. I didn't even know about this meeting until I stumbled upon someone in town mentioning something on one of the like a post which sometimes I stumble upon, like, otherwise I wouldn't have been here.
And but thank you for coming and maybe
And I can advocate and I can let other parents know because I I know um some other parents who have kindergartners and um, and preschoolers. So my son will be in preschool next year. Uh, so my kids will be here, you know, for the next six years.
What what I've known over the years is the more people that do show up for meetings and I've been around, I've been around a long time. When it starts, interest is shown and even on the Zoom meetings and numbers go up, then it get, it kind of wakes people up in town hall, like, wait a minute, people are really noticing there's something going on there.
Right.
Rather than, so talk up the meetings.
And and how many people are paying the taxes? It's gonna be what? What's the difference gonna be for the little amount of money that we're looking for for any one educator? I know it's gonna be a continual cost, but it's gonna support all the grades, is that correct? In your math, in providing the actual Hey, great.
So the other issue that I think the school is facing that that maybe people aren't realizing is the class sizes are increasing. Okay, my daughter's in first grade or kindergarten. She's got twenty-one kids in her class. There's a teacher and a power professional for twenty-one kindergartners. Okay, like, you get three or four kids who need a lot of help. And guess what? You've got seventeen roaming around that, you know, just can't get the help that they need. And you look at the numbers and they're not coming down. I mean, what's kindergarten gotten it right now? I know we had some grades that were seven kids, eleven kids. You know, I think that's a lot more manageable for a teacher, but once you come in with these twenty-one kid classes that are gonna have one teacher year after year after year, I think you need that extra help. And, you know, again, the reason I moved to this town was because it had a good school. And it's part of a good school system. So again, it's it's a, it's an issue for all residents. It affects everyone's property values. It affects the desire for people to come here. Like, I I think it's a major issue and it's just not getting enough attention. Um, you know, again, if one teacher could prevent us from getting one more person student that's gotta go on out-of-district placement or uh IEP, then you you're gonna save the cost.
And the other, and the other issue that I have is, you know, as kids advance, you know, after the third grade, as they enter fourth, fifth, and sixth, I don't like the trend of the declining enrollment and parents looking at other school systems outside of the Johnson School. Um, because I I don't think that many parents in the past have felt like their children were getting the support they needed and there were other alternatives. I really do want to make the school the best that it can possibly be. And I want parents to like wanna be here and send their kids to this school and have it be their number one option.
I also think that the school has done a very good job. You know, they've got some of the youngest employees in the town, which impacts health insurance costs and all of that. I get it. The town has costs that are town-wide. But you need to look at where those are coming from to an extent. I mean, you know, we we just hired what? But you need to look at where those are coming from to an extent. I mean, you know, we we just hired, what, three new teachers that are fresh out of school? I mean. So I get it, there's there's town expenses, but how is the school, you know, as a whole impacting that and how are they being. Treated as a result, I guess, is my question. And that's what I was saying earlier, Patty, is like, I have no idea what the town budget looks like. You know, i- it's it's a total figment of my imagination at this point. Which makes it hard to say, how do we fit into that budget?
The school is the largest part of the town budget by far. Um, and and for for a town of this size, it should be.
Yeah.
It's about half. Should be about half. And don't don't forget, you know, we had an override three years ago. A general override, so look for some of that money. Where does that go? You know, that that's that's a recurring expense every year. I mean, that that just goes under your tax. You've had it all. We have had an override. School gets, has their budget plus a hundred and forty thousand dollars. You you realize that too, right? You get an extra hundred and forty thousand dollars. That was an override. From a million years ago.
When Mr. Tebow was the chair of the school committee.
That's right. So, but we had a hundred, we had a um. A general override when I was in fourth selection. And I didn't really want it, but I said, okay, I went along with it. And. Where did that, where's all that money going? Alright, now I know the town is hiring other people. They've added, they've they've added some, some people up there, you know, so. The school needs it, you gotta have it, you know? I would push the FinCom and I wouldn't give up. I would not give up. Make them pay, stay for it.
What is FinCom? So it's just a finance committee.
For the town.
Got it, thanks.
Yeah.
They hold the purse strings for the town.
And then I urge everybody to go to the town meeting, which is in. And then.
I think so, town meeting, yeah.
I think the override was over six hundred thousand dollars a couple of years, so.
So it's, I think it's over April break. Why do they do it over a break when families will not be around?
The FinCom? They accept town meeting on the day of.
Town meeting is May seventeen. Saturday, Saturday, May seventeen.
So it's May seventeen?
This year's town meeting.
Okay, I thought I thought it was.
The elections are April, then they changed, they changed the town meeting to May. But people have to go.
Right. I don't always think that the space is enough for the amount of people. When do people do attend? There's like not enough space. I think, I could be wrong, I haven't gone uh like last year, um, but there have been times when it's pretty full. Am I, am I inaccurate?
Usually, it's usually difficult to even have a thorn, which is kinda sad, but. It's been some contentious meetings, believe me.
The biggest one since I've been here, I've only been here five years, it's been the old North East during that, that was, that was a huge. Okay, so where we're at, I think. And Rob, I know you've worked so many versions and I'm more than happy to help you. I think we need to do a version four.
We'll do whatever I'm directed to do and create another version, um.
Sorry, Rob.
No, I mean, that's fine. I think you're you're doing exactly what you're elected to do and uh I will do what I'm hired to do. So um. A a version four, I would think we would bring to that FinCom meeting. To present it as an alternative, so it's not as a, you know, we don't have any ideas of how to do that.
Exactly, because they they need to see what the impact can be, right? I I don't wanna go in there blind and be like, okay, you've seen version three that we want X. I I think we need the hard numbers. They're all finance people. They wanna know what the impact is gonna be. And we need to talk about the whys and the facts. And if we could get data, I think that speaks volumes. Like, if we could get data in regards to, you know. The school enrollment numbers declining as the, as people progress up in grade level. I think that would be huge, understanding the reasons why parents have decided that their kids should go elsewhere. And I know that Kevin has reached out to parents. I don't know what. If he's done a survey or if he has that information readily available, but I think it's facts of that nature that would be really helpful. As well as new enrollment data for the past few years and the increase in class sizes, starting from preschool into kindergarten. Because that's.
What is the cost to the town of these people that leave to go to the Marblehead Charter School or leave to go to these other schools? I just personally don't know, like, how that's handled. Is that like, okay, here you go, town, now you're paying for this?
The charter school.
The Marblehead Charter is a.
So, yeah.
Say, like, do we, does the town of Nahant have to pay the Marblehead Charter School for those kids?
My understanding is yes.
Yes. I believe there's a town assessment.
So what is the, what is the cost to us of all of these? The numbers are important of the numbers of students, but what is the cost of these kids leaving and going to another school? You know, would that help us? If we could keep more kids here, would that help reduce the costs that we're paying? You know, and help our budget? I mean, I know that we can't promise that, that doing this will keep kids from leaving. But if we could say to them, listen, you're losing, on average, six kids a year to other. Public schools in the area and that's costing us X as opposed to what it would cost us to send them to the Johnson School.
That's.
Then.
It is. And Rob, is that based on the cost for people that's in effect for that year?
Yeah, I I'm gonna have to do a little research on charter school stuff. That's that wasn't the situation that we had when I was in Rockville. There was no charter schools. Close by.
You know, like Essex Tech is one thing, that's high school. My brother went to Essex Aggie and it's a completely different, you know, he used to eat his lunch up in the trees. With chainsaws hanging from him. It was an unbelievable school. It's for a certain person, for sure. Uh, we can't solve that problem.
High school.
Exactly, that's high school, like, that's, but the four, five, six graders that are leaving, what's that costing us as a town?
Yeah, I I think if we go in armed with that data, it it will say a lot. Rob, do you know how, offhand, how many students we have at the charter school?
It's on that enrollment report, um. Which I don't have my hands on right now, but uh I believe it was. It's a guess, nine, ten.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, it it was in that round, the double-digit number.
And there's other. Private schools as well.
Yeah. In our drive, there there's an enrollment report that shows where all the kids who are of school age, where they, where they got them. So.
Again, part of my problem is just ignorance of, I don't know how that's dealt with financially. I don't know what the town pays for that, what people pay for on their own. Or I I just don't know.
It's the charter schools of of public. And so that is the transfer of funds. Now, how large of a transfer, I don't know. I would think that there's a formula for it based on the cost for people.
I'm gonna have to do some research. It may be charged to the state subsidy, the chapter seventy money that comes to the town is reduced. Because a charter expense is taken out of what is normally headed your direction, gets redirected to the charter. From the income from the state to support schools is redirected to the charter. That's gotta be based on a per student that that are in the charter.
You don't have to pay with uh presentation.
No.
Right, so as you won't find a number in the budget, you find it in the, in the stream that comes from the state. A portion of it is funnelled off and goes to charter by law. Part of that law, it, I'm almost, almost sure it's that, but without having ever spent time looking through the law book on that. Uh, we'll have to do that. So, the bottom line is you'd like to see a a version four that includes the math and ELL specialist. As it relates to the version three presentation and to try to make that. Another number that is somewhere in the range of those other numbers we were looking at. Because again, our first version was two, two fifty-six or two forty-six and the one twelve and a. Fully loaded uh math and ELL specialist would be one eighty.
Yeah.
So you're basically asking me to run a scenario that would show that. I just wanna make sure I've got my right, right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if we can play a little bit with that information from from the preschool fund too. I think we just have to look at that as. Cause it's gonna be a one. Preschool can't keep sustaining.
Remember, we're not.
No, I know, I know. It's gonna take us through this year and and next year.
We did an exercise this week where we tried to predict where all the lines would end come June. And we're sitting here on February twenty-fifth. That's a risky exercise to do. I mean, we're pretty close, but I wouldn't wanna. Go in and try to deposit that amount somewhere and say that's what it is. Um, you know, just the maternity leave substitute, all. Right there for reasons and contractually there is a fee that was not budgeted for. That has to be paid for a substitute to come in and take first grade for the remainder of the year. So you take a master's degree, first step, divided across a number of days in the school year that are left. That's an unbudgeted amount that has to be accounted for in this year's budget exercise. We've done that and that's where that, we're gonna be over this year, one forty-one is, which the. Town wanted to know, town administrator wanted to know how much of that is over and. Sat in the meeting with us and assured us that they would advocate for us having coverage for that. From the reserve at the end of the year, as well as possible budget line transfers from other departments. That hadn't fully spent their amounts. So we're uh depending on that um honest, good faith offer. Uh, to do that for us at a time three or four months from now. And it might be a little less than that, might be a little more than that. But that was part of the, if the one oh eight was used for next year's budget profile. We had to deal with what this year's present issue was. So I I can certainly present a a version four, um, wouldn't necessarily have to. Now, you want the best person for the job, but when we designed it, we went to master's degree, which I think is of of. Where you need to go and halfway up the scale. So we're looking for someone who taught for a while, five, six, seven years. And then decided not to be a classroom teacher, but to be a specialist. Most specialists are first and second year people out of college. There are people that have sort of retooled their expectation for their career and they've decided to focus into a specialty. And that's why I went with that number generated by master's degree step seven, I think. If we went master's degree step five, I still think we could do that and take the seventy thousand. Maybe into the sixties somewhere and then it's sixty plus the one twelve. I think I could run a version that we certainly can. Bring with us uh to a FinCom meeting and propose a compromise, as Greg says.
Yeah.
So I will certainly do that.
And I do think that we have a very young teaching staff. I think it it, we're going to have substitute teachers for a long time.
Yeah. So that's where we're at, um.
Yeah, so no vote. Um, we will. Back to the drawing board slightly.
Well, I just.
Yes.
I think the capital expenditure for the school, what, that's up this year, isn't it?
I believe so.
That's one thing you wanna present to them too. I wanna let them know, but, you know, the school, you're gonna free up a lot of money. That we have to pay, cause the school was done over for two thousand. Okay, but, okay, so it was done over. And it was a, we did a debt uh debt exclusion for that, wasn't an override. We're paying for it. But that's up, that's gonna be gone. That frees up a lot of money for the town. We wanna make sure, again, you get their budget, get their budget before you make any decisions and. You know, just say, look, you know, you, you put money in stabilization, you're freeing up all this money, we we need it. We've given money back, we've been very conscious of that. We need to, we need to fund the school area.
I think the issue with the, let's say, decrease in the bond amount when it's paid off is that's a. A number that comes off the books one time and then it's not sustainable over time. It's a one-time injection of. Of of funds and that quickly dissipates.
Right, but it's still money that we don't have to pay.
Correct, correct.
You don't, you don't have to shell it out, so.
Correct.
That's just more money for the town to.
Yep.
Okay. So I know, we have a plan in terms of moving forward and. Think we can move on to the next item on the agenda is. And Greg, I'm gonna signal you out because you excel at these motions and it needs to be exactly as against an item ten.
No problem.
Agenda and we need to add to the convening in open session. Cause we're gonna come back, we're gonna go into executive session and then we're gonna come back into open session. So.
Okay.
That are here and watching, give us a few minutes and then don't we come back and join us?
So, motion uh to adjourn to executive session pursuant to MGL chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. Or litigating position of the public body to return to open session thereafter.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so folks that are online, cause we're gonna go into executive session, except the board members. Um, if you could log off. And because I, we don't, I don't have a chatroom set up on this, uh, it's right now eight thirty-three. And if you'd like to come back, we'll be done with the presentation and I will craft it. So that we're back online, so you could log back in if you wanted to. Be around for the consideration of the contract vote at uh eight forty-five, quarter of nine. So I'm just gonna frame my presentation. The board has already got information about the contract. But that way we'll be in an executive session that is only the board. So thank you, folks, for doing that. And at quarter nine, you can log back on and we'll wait for you.
Here for you, Rob.
Good, alright, so um. I did hand out or 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 send out a sort of cheat sheet that went bullet by bullet through the. Proposed changes to the unit B contract, which is for paras. Uh, both Patty and Beth were there for that, again, as they were for unit A. Um, I think it was. Professional, um, and well. Received and fair and equitable what the presentation was for unit B. So I'm just gonna run down through those bullets. Uh, it's a three-year agreement. And as the flow of the contract, which I also think I sent out to you folks, the way it would look in final version. And anything in that document that is in bold print is a new or changed item. This is just a list of those changes. So it updates the non-discrimination clause to match the law. The salary change, the COLA change is three point two five in year one. Four point two five in year two and five point two five in year three. Uh, last time this contract negoti- was negotiated, it was three percent, four percent and five percent. The para salaries are um. Low and certainly low and compared to a lot of the most recent. Contract negotiation settlements. So the three-two-five for next year's version is the same percentage that unit A changed. Uh, unit A was three-two-five, three-five, three-five. So this is a little more in year two and three. But remember that. Some of your paras are funded through preschool and not in the budget itself. So there's only uh six or seven individuals that appear in the budget that are generated by the COLA change. Uh, the other thing that uh we did, which I think was uh reasonable, was to add a step seven in year one. Add a step eight in year two. And add a step nine in year three. So someone who had maxed out. As far as they could go in the scale or at step six. Now get the COLA plus a new step seven. In year two, that group gets the COLA plus a new step eight. And in year three, they get the COLA and a new step nine. And a nine-step scale is not unreasonable, and those that are at step one, two, or three. They're getting COLA plus a step anyway. So I I think um it's reasonable, uh this first year, the top para will get. Twenty-five dollars an hour. Uh, in year two, the top para gets twenty-seven sixty-four an hour. And in year three, the top para with at least nine years of experience will be. Three years from now, thirty dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. And the settlements that are on the North Shore in Beverly, in uh Marblehead. In Gloucester, who went on strike over all this. Their top numbers in year one and two. In some cases already have a thirty in front of that for less than nine years of experience for an hourly wage. So these are hardworking individuals that contribute greatly to the school and. I think they were um. I don't know if the word is pleased, but they felt respected. By the proposed change that was put on the table. So the next one is to add language as the unit A has for twenty-one pays. That's really not an issue. Change the date of noti- notification of how many sick days you have from October first to October fifteenth. That's not a problem. Change the differential. To an additional sixty dollars per day. Instead of the present forty dollars per day, when a para serves as the substitute. For a teacher, so they get their regular para wages, but for instance, today we have a. Uh, fifth grade teacher out with the flu, and uh one of our ESPs is the teacher of record. For the last two days. So they get their twenty-two dollars an hour or twenty dollars an hour. And they get a differential for having been sub all day of forty dollars. Right across the entire day. This would change it to sixty. This adds June teenth as a holiday. Uh, changes the sick leave language to be the same as the unit A contract. Uh, right now, you can only accrue your sick days to fifty total days. This changes it to you can accrue unused sick days to a hundred and twenty days. Uh, personal leave language becomes the same as unit A, bereavement becomes the same as unit A. Uh, the parental leave language becomes the same as unit A. Uh, sick leave buyback, so when you retire for retirement purposes, for your unused sick leave. You get a payout of fifteen dollars a day for up to twenty-five days. So whatever the math on that is, it's not a a large sum of money, it's. Three, three seventy-five or something like that. For not having used all your sick leave. This changes it to twenty-five dollars a day for up to seventy-five days. The longevity uh adds a new category at five years of two hundred and fifty dollars. Seven years at uh. Three fifty, ten years at four hundred, and then changes the. Actual ten-year payment from four hundred to five hundred, the fifteen-year payment from six hundred to seven fifty. And the twenty-year payment from eight hundred to a thousand. And it adds a brand-new category for twenty-five years of service as an ESP. To a longevity of twelve hundred dollars. We have one individual in that category. It does add a toileting stipend. So if you happen to be most likely a preschool para, there are some kids that are not. At the point where they uh can use the restroom facilities unsupported and unaided. And for those that would have that assignment, and this is very common, there would be a thousand-dollar stipend. Uh, the last three items, uh ESPs required to attend professional development. Only when the session applies to something that is beneficial to them. So right now, an ESP goes to all the professional days, whether there's a presentation that. Has any value to them or not. This would say on those days. That it wasn't a professional development that was of value. They would not have to come to school, they wouldn't be paid either, it's a non-student day. Um, they would only attend when there was something that was worthwhile. And that seems like a no-brainer. Uh, professional development reimbursement for taking workshops or coursework from two hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars. And uh the amount that's available for the ESP group. Uh, change it from a thousand in year one. To twelve fifty in year two, excuse me, uh from a thousand to twelve fifty to fifteen hundred are the present amounts. To eighteen hundred, two thousand, and twenty-five hundred. And the final one is to give the same phrase about a ESP's child. Can attend the Johnson School if they're a non-resident, as long as it doesn't. Add to the need to hire additional people or an outside placement. That you can handle the educational needs of that child. So those are all the changes. We would have a couple of minutes for clarifying questions. And then we would come back into a uh open session. And at quarter of, there may be folks logging back on to hear what the vote is, so I would entertain any questions. That number, since we're in executive session. Of three point two five was built into version one. So I didn't state what the COLA was, but I had anticipated we would. Get there and we would do the same COLAs we did with the teachers, and I built that number in. So this does not increase next year's budget by this vote. It does increase a theoretical future budget. Build of next year or the year after. But this year I accounted for what I thought would be an expected reasonable change. So that was that. And we actually have folks starting to log back on, so um.
Yeah, well.
Folks are comfortable, we could uh by consensus return to open session. I don't think you vote in both sessions to return to open sessions.
I have no comments, cause I was actively involved. Does anyone else have any comments?
I.
No.
No.
The respect. Peace. For Rob to mention that, that was always a um. The paras always never seemed to have that amount of respect in negotiations, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
We we had laid out four, maybe possible five meetings. First meeting, ground rules. Second meeting, exchange proposals. The third meeting. We came back and had a counter. Because their original request was higher than what our original offer was, we looked at a. Sweet spot that was reasonable and equitable, and they felt. I believe respected and appreciated and valued, and agreed that night to. Okay it with their group and take it to their organization that ratified it today. So.
Yeah, well, it was very pleasant.
So it is quarter out. And we had one. Person logged back on. And actually, Rob. And Howard is on, and she is uh certainly in the association, if not one of the officers of the association. And was in negotiation. So. We could do item number eleven.
Yes. So. Would anyone like to make a vote? Between, why anybody? Oh, maybe. That might still go here. There you go.
So could I have a motion for a consideration of a vote? To ratify a new agreement between the Naha School Committee and the Hana Teachers Association, unit B. For a three-year period running from August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Motion to ratify new agreement. Between the Hana School Committee and the Hana Teachers Association for a three-year period running from August first, twenty twenty-five through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Including the proposed changes. I don't know, is that what we're doing?
That is what we are doing, yeah.
Just uh clarify that it's for unit B, Greg, and I think.
For unit B, yes.
My second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And uh, Robin, you don't have to say anything, but uh. You could if you want, I just wanted to again express thanks to you folks who were. Uh, part of negotiations for. In my opinion, conducting a fair, respectful. Honorable exchange of thoughts and ideas and challenges, and I have immense respect for that. So don't feel you have to say anything, but if you'd like to, you can do so.
No, I think I can on behalf of the unit B members and. Gail, who was with me, um, we did feel appreciated and respected, and it was a very pleasant. Negotiation. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail, and thank you to all of unit B.
Thank you to unit B, and thank you, Rob, for another successful negotiation.
Not a problem at all. What I'm overpaid to do.
Don't tell anyone that, Rob, before you know it, it'll be coming for your, your money.
Say that every school I've been in.
Our last item on our agenda are future agenda items.
Alright, so the future agenda items that are on this list right now are. Vote on participation in state school choice program. You have to do that every year. Cause if you don't vote it, you become a choice community. So you have to vote to not participate in choice, and that has have has to be sent to the state. Uh, I do have a preschool fee structure, just for your knowledge, the. Fees that are charged for preschool have not been changed for five years. That doesn't mean they have to change. But a reasonable adjustment in it. Might be something you wanna enter into, uh, and I'd have to flush out the proposal for that. But based on the discussions we were having about budget. Uh, it seemed important to at least entertain a discussion about a possible structure change. To preschool, plus, um, I've gotta honor the preschool teachers. Who, remember, had been, uh, we hadn't seen it yet, been talking about a restructuring of the preschool. And an increasing of the time and making it more academic. Well, that would cost more. And I basically had to say the other day, based on where we were at right now, I wasn't sure. At that point in time, whether we could move that proposal forward or not. And then we would have to look at it maybe in a subsequent year. I had to be honest with them about something that. I'm sure they logged into this meeting and heard the presentation about what was happening to the, you know, the amount of fees that were there. And um. Uh, I think we should be looking at offering programs that are in the best interest of. Every level of child that we educate. And our professionals that work in the classroom know better than the. Superintendent what's necessary for those kids. So um. That's a little bit on hold. And then our mystery contestant from the Essex Tech School Board. Is still an item we carry because we were told we had to vote somebody, so those are on the future agenda items. Um. If we're. Back in session again before the FinCom meeting. Um, maybe we would add a looking at the version four possibility. Or maybe it's just something you wanna be able to take to that meeting with regard to that, so those are. Presently, the future agenda items that are sketched onto here.
So you were talking about um the teachers where, where there was some discussion about preschool restructuring and staffing proposals. Or proposal. Can you?
They had surveyed parents, and they had gone that far.
Yeah.
Down into collecting information, cause we said to them, we gotta know that the parents are supportive of what you wanna do. And they had just completed the survey when I met with them and said. You know, we've got a budget challenge going on, and I don't want you to go too far with that proposal. And then have me just say, well, no. Can't happen.
Well, I guess it's talking about, not in too many specifics, but like, so the restructuring, would it be like making a full day? From eight to two fifteen.
I think they wanna take the the lunch bunch component of it, make it more academic.
Right.
Oriented and and centered for a longer period of di- of time.
Right.
I'm not sure it would be the entire day.
You know what I mean, I was, that's what I was kind of.
Yeah, I think that was what we were making sure we weren't shooting ourselves in the foot by saying, we're going to full-day preschool, and then. The enrollment dropping because there was a certain proportion who. Had been surveyed and said, I don't want full day, I don't even want my kid in school a part, part of the day.
Right.
You know, they're not old enough for a a a full day of school yet.
What were the other components?
So the the, there is a survey out there, they had collected it.
Right.
And I think it was something like ninety percent of who they surveyed were supportive of an expanded preschool.
Right.
Now with expanded preschool, then. Costs would go up, and then when the sort of cost ratios were discussed, I, on Monday morning. But we only heard about it last. You know, just before vacation, when Patty and I met in terms of what the proposal was, I wanted to make sure that their. Time was honored and they weren't spending. A whole amount of additional time without knowing we could move ahead, so thi- this is just sort of temporarily.
Right.
On hold.
Would that be because the the change of their. Their current hours that they're working would be a full.
Yeah, I mean, because right now the two teachers of record are point six three.
Right, so it'd be a point.
And then it goes into lunch bunch where one of those teachers stays for that. It doesn't get a teacher salary for that, they get an hourly salary for that.
Right.
So I I I I think the gist of the proposal was to take the two point six three teachers. Expand their FTE towards full-time.
Sure.
And then that costs money as it runs through the teacher's scale.
And was that broken down in the survey? Cause I answered the survey, I just don't remember.
Yeah, the the.
There was a lot of different scenarios that were given, and it was.
Because they weren't sure exactly.
Right.
Which what to present to the administration, who had to be the gatekeeper about how it was brought here.
Right.
I mean, I think I wouldn't present it, I'd have the two preschool teachers here, and we would present it as a, as a team.
Got it.
Um, but the sort of gist of it was increase the teacher time for both point six threes. And make it more academic.
Right.
And increase the academic time for those kids.
And the the numbers weren't.
And then e- even then, we didn't know exactly what, or how how many kids there are, how how much does each pay?
Right.
What was the balance, what's the revenue versus the expenses, and we now have that. And then this sort of bombshell hit us and uh.
I did.
I I felt it was important to. Be a truth and lending with them and say, look, right now, I think we're, we're at a pause. With regard to it.
I do have a question, so because preschool teachers are funded from the resolving revolving, sorry. Door, would that impact that if parents were amenable to?
Oh, right now, the.
That makes sense.
The total preschool, and I actually have a sheet here. That for this year in preschool. And it may. May appear on the screen, but. May appear on the screen, but this is the analysis I did. Without names. Student one, two, three, all the way through student number. Forty-two, you folks on the. Uh Zoom can't see it, but there are forty-two kids that are enrolled in. Some number of days of preschool or lunch bunch. And the max you can pay is eight thousand nine hundred and sixty bucks for the year. That kid pays nothing, and you go, how do they get to go to preschool for nothing? It's uh most likely a special ed student that you're obligated to provide programming for, so therefore there is no fee. There are, there are three students in that category, but you'll see the numbers range. Bottom line is, that's what we collect. For income. Two hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The balance at the start of the year was two hundred and nineteen thousand. These are the things we charge off. These are the two teachers. That's the point six-three equivalent. Those are the two paras, and these are lunch bunch folks. So even though we collect. Two hundred and eleven in fees. Just for salaries. That are charged to preschool. The cost is a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Next year it'll be a hundred and sixty-one thousand because of. The increases in the contract amounts for those folks, including what you just did. Because I had built it into the parents. So it is not an operation that yearly. Makes huge sums of money, it has an income of two eleven. And next year, a financial obligation of a hundred and sixty-one. So it only has thirty or forty thousand in any kind of give and take to it. That number there. Grew because of the ESER uh funds that things were charged off to that as opposed to charging it to preschool. And. That's why I did that exercise and said, well, charge these things out here at a hundred and eight thousand. That's gonna be my balance at the end of this school is one sixty-seven. Not in the two hundred thousands. And then play it out for next year. And I just said, well, let's assume it's the same kids. Let's assume. There was a two-point-five fee increase. You can set that at zero and say, nobody's approved a fee increase, what are you talking about? Now it's back to eighty-nine, sixty, et cetera. And if those same kids were there. You make another two hundred and eleven. But now your balance. Is going all the way down to a hundred and five. And a hundred and five can't fund a hundred and eight thousand dollar obligation. That's why I was saying it's a, this is a one-year. Kind of proposal. For a. Town. Budget situation that they find themselves in. And even if you increased. Two and a half percent. I only picked two and a half because that's the. Sort of override number, taxes aren't supposed to go up more than two and a half percent. All you generate for added preschool income is fifty-two hundred dollars by charging those same people. Two and a half percent more. And if you did it across three years. Well, you made fifteen thousand dollars more to help pay for. How that changes. Is what the bottom line would have been. So um it's it's not as if this money was just collecting and. Uh being hoarded, uh there were times when other money was available that's no longer there. But the exercise is, there's your income. There's your expenses. And now, yeah, the balance can carry that effect for this year, but it can't sustain it.
I guess my question is. Um is what the difference is from what the current is, and for them to go to the. Close search of full point, which I know you're gonna do the math later, which is.
We asked them to do a survey to make sure that they had support for the folks that were presently in it or would enter it. To support whatever model they wanted to put forth. And we weren't sitting here saying, hey, we wanna do this, we wanna cheese the feed of that, and we're hoping we get forty-two kids. And if we don't have the same thing that happened with the Y program, where it went from thirty kids down to. Just before it ended, I was driving one kid over to the Lynn Y. In the. Council on Aging Band. And that wasn't sustainable. So because the program wasn't here, people didn't want their kids going to the Lynn Y or or to pay that fee. So I wanted to make sure what they presented was something that the people supported and wanted and would pay for. Before we went and presented it here.
Thank you for.
And as far as we got was, they did the survey.
Yes.
And uh then. We're at where we're at right now and uh.
I look forward to seeing what that ends up being.
So I'm not saying it's gone. I'm just saying, right now I'd put it on hold. To honor their time. They teach all day long and not to be anticipating. Uh some big change when it's a possibility that it couldn't happen. I don't think that's right to put people through those kind of exercises when. There's not a um. Sure. Guarantee that you can pull it off.
Right, if if you were to look at the numbers, what would the difference be in sound? Is that the biggest?
Yeah, it's gonna be in the, it's 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 gonna be in the increase from the point six-threes up to even point eight. When you take someone who's a long-term experienced teacher, their salary may be eighty or ninety dollar, ninety thousand dollars. So at point six-three, it's roughly half of that. You take them to point eight. You can make a fifteen, twenty thousand dollar shift. And if someone's only getting a lunch bunch hourly salary, who'd now be earning a teacher salary. Then. That's a increase that has to come out of the fee structure. And if you don't get the kids, then you can't support what your, what your program is. So where we had left as we met, we said we support uh what you wanna do, but we gotta know what the people say. So they focused up on that and said, we'll do that. And and you were the beneficiary of seeing that, as well as another forty. Kids' parents and potential parents. So they were doing exactly what they were told to do. And uh then we got. Derailed slightly. For the time being.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I know it's getting late, so could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn at nine oh four P M on February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Go in a second? Second, all in favor? Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. Spread the word. Yeah, I know, more parents can be challenging. Feel like a lot of people have more than one, and they're at that age, you know, you know, the younger.